Conduct business and eliminate background noise. For general meetings, not hearings and only for items under which the chair solicited public comment, members of the public participating in the Zoom meeting may submit a written response via the text chat, provided they include their full name and address for the public record. Members of the public viewing the meeting on ECAT may submit any questions in writing to D P E D at eastern dot M A dot U S. The chair reserves the right to respond to questions during the live meeting, but may limit the times of such activities. All votes will be by roll call. For public hearings during the public testimony part, members of the public joining may recognize by using the raised hand function found out of the participants from Zoom or make a request within the Q and A function. As in any public hearing, testimony offered must be directly, which be related to the hearing being held and off topic commentary or indecent behavior will not be tolerated. The chair reserves the right to end all testimony to anyone who abuses the use of the medium platform or resume remove them from the hearing. When all business indicated on the agenda has been completed, the members will vote to adjourn the meeting signaling the end of the meeting and termination of the ECAT recording. So I will start with the roll call vote. I'll go by order, uh, Kid.
Here.
Kedham.
Present.
Weeks.
Here.
And Wolf is here as well. So for um, the first order of business, um, Steph and I have talked. Um, and because she has another meeting that she kind of has to pop into, we're gonna shift the agenda around just a little bit.
Oh. Do you want me not to promote the sign person?
Not quite yet. Um, we are gonna shift slightly so that we can do the zoning uh, bylaws first. Uh, so they can definitely be here if that's okay. So sorry about that. It'll be just a couple of minutes. Um, but we wanna make sure that we have Stephanie here. She's got to, um, if you want to share Stephanie.
Thank you, um, Mickey. So the board needs to vote tonight to hold a public hearing on the zoning articles we discussed at the last meeting. The first one is center school, that is to change the zoning to the business district, which would allow um, outdoor and indoor recreation with special permits. And the, the purpose for that, the board will recall that, I think it was fall of last year, it may have been a little longer ago than that, um, that the select board voted to um, authorize the the, I'm sorry, the town voted to authorize the select board to um, seek disposition of the center school, which is now surplus after the opening of the Blanching School. And with the, the purpose of um, soliciting a proposal for conversion of the site to a recreational facility. And in order to, they are um, going to be publishing in our R P. And in order to uh, be able to allow the, that use, the school would need to be zoned, uh, um, the site would need to be zoned as business. I'm going to go through each of these and then the board can either vote the slate or can vote individually. We discussed the compact neighborhood overlay district where the currently there is an eighteen hundred square feet of living space that would include the basement and thus restrict the ability of someone to complete that area. Whether uh, for uh, some other room activity. And also uh, to consider the bedroom limitation that it now has. It wouldn't be to change the limit of the eight hundred square feet, but to not have it include a finished basement or and, and then also to consider um, the limitation on bedrooms. The solar is to update the solar bylaw that would allow a mid-sized solar system in the business and the residential district. Amos has worked hard on that zoning and he and I met on that. And that seems to be reasonable. And then to look at our A U by law, our in-law apartments, to bring it into compliance with the state bill that was just passed, the change to um, section three of forty A. And um, other considerations.
Stephanie, um, there is a, there is a problem with the solar. This week, uh, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. This week, Rob forward me a case uh, that came out recently, this week actually, in which uh, a judge passed uh, judgment on final in an appeal in which uh, a town, I don't remember the name of the town, but anyways, restricting a large-scale solar photovoltaic system to S P O D didn't work anymore. And uh, the towns cannot issue bylaws that limit the large-scale only to uh, overlays. That's a major issue. I don't know how to deal with it. I think I need to consult, especially with Rob, that is the one that sent me that case and figure out what do we do because that is exactly the same language and the same bylaws that that town has as we have. That large-scale solar system can only be erected on a overlay district. So that's a problem. That, that mean that our bylaw is in contradiction to uh, state laws that protect the solar system. So it's a, it's an issue. Uh, we might need a little time.
Okay, so I haven't had a chance to look at that. Bob also sent that case to me um, when he sent it to you and I haven't had a chance to look at it. I know I, I thought Bob said he didn't think it would affect us, but let's take a look at it and we consider it. And um, from a timing perspective, if we wanted to get something on the town meeting warrant for that mid-size, we, we need to hold a meeting um, soon. And I think Suzanne, you have the date for that meeting?
So the public hearing would have to be October eighth.
The late, at the latest, right?
Yeah, yeah. And we have to publish before.
We could, we can, the board can always vote to hold the public hearing and then either decide at that time not to move forward with it?
Yeah, and tha- that's okay. Uh, uh, what I will suggest, if it is at all possible, is to submit that specific issue and our bylaws to council.
Yep.
And have them pass a judgment if what we have in the bylaws because it will be, I don't know, it doesn't make sense to make a change in the bylaws that doesn't contemplate this big issue, if it is a big issue.
Yes, yep. So we can do that. I, I can take, I can do that.
Yeah, the, the other thing is I, I have never consulted with any expert related to the uh, relationship in between two hundred and fifty kilowatts for large systems and the amount of uh, uh, amount of uh, area that you need.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, because what we have, it doesn't make sense. It's, it's too, too small. Uh, and it doesn't contemplate the fact that you don't use one hundred percent of the area either. So I, I, I need, I need, I need help from whoever is an expert on this to tell me what on our area in England, Massachusetts, is the relationship in between area and kilowatts.
Yep.
The rest is more or less ready for discussion.
Yep. So um, so would you agree, Amos, that at least scheduling the
Yeah.
hearing makes sense and we can get some answers there? And as you're, as you were just saying that, I, I know you'd asked me before who I might know. I can, I'm sure I still have contact information if the individual still works there with the project leader that we worked with on the Prospect Street, the landfill solar s- array. And I think, I, we have a couple of contacts for people that have done solar system, the solar base that we could reach out to on that.
Forward the contacts to me, I'll make the, the connection.
All right, that's, that would be great.
The other thing that I was asking, do you remember when we reviewed together is for at least one member of the board to review with me. So I need a volunteer.
Do you wanna do the vo- oh, Alan just raised his hand.
All right.
Review your solar, um? Yeah, sure, happy to do that. I've had a longstanding interest in solar.
Okay, so I will forward you the materials.
Okay, sure, happy to do it.
And uh, after you read it, we set a, a meeting to review together.
Okay.
All right.
All right, um, excellent. Uh, so do we wanna hold um, the, do you wanna take the vote? To hold a public hearing?
And can I, I just want to check on the date because I know Suzanne said the eighteenth, but I
No, he said eighth.
Oh, eighth, okay.
October eighth.
Sorry, I missed, I misheard.
Nope, October eighth.
Is there, is there a date for the town meeting?
Suzanne? I couldn't hear, can you repeat that?
Is that the earliest?
That's the earliest date. Other dates, you have two options after that, the special town meeting is the eighteenth.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure it's the earliest date.
It's the earliest date.
Yep, thank you.
And town meeting again is November eighteenth, twenty twenty four. We can circulate a time.
All right, uh, do I have a motion um, for the public hearings for the zoning? For October eighth, anyone?
Motion to uh, approve uh, the uh, board for public hearing uh, on November eighth, Kedham.
No, for October eighth.
October.
And you, if you could, if you could state the four different, would be helpful.
Yeah, for center school, compact neighborhood, overlay district, solar and A D U's.
Good.
Second, Kid.
Thank you.
All right, we'll do this by roll call, um, Weeks?
Uh, I, yep.
Kedham?
Hi.
Kid?
Hi.
And Wolf is and I as well. Public hearing scheduled. All right, um, so thank you so much uh, for your patience as we work to kind of do this piece. Um, so the next, uh, going back to the agenda, uh, eternally illuminated sign for six sixty-one Washington Street. We have someone to present.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mike Harvey. I'm a representative for Harvey Signs up in Methuen, Massachusetts, and we have been hired by Silco Volkswagen of Easton at six sixty-one Washington to uh, permit and install new signage at the new car dealership. Uh, Suzanne, should I read the project narrative or just go into the drawings?
Can you share your screen as well?
Yes. Tired of staring at me? Please forgive me if I do this wrong. Uh, we will go to, okay. Just the project narrative, if you hadn't had a chance to read through it. Uh, the applicant, Silco Volkswagen of Easton requests planning board's approval to allow for the illumination of new site signage to reflect the Volkswagen auto, automotive dealership currently under construction at six sixty-one Washington Street. His property is within the Quesset, I apologize if I mispronounce that, Commercial District, Sub-District C. As part of the overall project, the applicant proposes the installation of new freestanding signs, wall signs, and wayfinding signs consistent with signage seen at modern automotive dealerships. All the following proposed signs are to be internally illuminated until eleven P M, as noted in the Town of Easton zoning bylaws. Uh, and before we get into the uh, the five signs that are to be illuminated, there are a total of eight signs in the package. Only five of them are requesting illumination. Three of them are par- are pylon signs and two of them are wall signs. And I'll, I'd like to share those with you now. Uh, and this was for a site plan that was approved by the planning board last year, June sixth. And overall, and please feel free to interrupt me if I, if you need me to pause or just request to shut up, I'm really good with that here. Uh, we have the signs marked out here for all five. N zero one and N zero two are identical, and I'll show those to you in just a moment. They're pylon signs. It just has a Volkswagen si- Volkswagen logo on it and um, it's about fifteen feet tall. N zero six is the third pylon sign. It has a Volkswagen logo on it and it says service. And the reason why we have two matching signs is because it sits on a corner lot which has three entrances, one coming off of Washington Street and one coming off of uh, Depot Street for the main lot. And then there's one specific entrance for service, which is why there's an additional service pylon sign. And then finally, the two wall signs that are to be illuminated show right here on the building. And I, and I'll show you a real close up of that first. And I also brought some pictures because it's easier to see if you've already seen what the sign looks like installed. Here's a, a front view from Washington Street of what the building will look like. Basically, the two signs say Volkswagen and Silco, the name of the dealership, which is required by the Volkswagen partnership. And if, uh, do you see the pictures that I just put up?
Yep.
Your screen is paused. How do I do that? Sorry. Okay, let's try this again. Here we go.
Think we were just seeing a drawing.
Okay, and do you see the pictures now? So this would be, uh, this is uh, Nanuit, which is out in New York. And here are three stages of illumination. During daytime, the illumination is off. This would be at dusk, you can see roughly the lights are coming on. Um, and then at nighttime is what it would look like. So we've got architectural lighting along with the button logo and the name of the dealership as an example. Um, and then just rather than going back and forth, I'll just show you the, uh, oops, I'll just show you the other signs here. Here we go. These would be examples of the freestanding signs, which I can show you in the package as well. Uh, so this, we're gonna have one, we call these tombstone pylon signs. One tombstone is gonna be at Washington Street and one is gonna be at Depot and uh, at the main entrances. Here's an example of what it would look like daytime and then illuminated at night. Um, and then I, I was, the, this is a new sign package for Volkswagen, they just rolled it out. So unfortunately, they don't have a lot of dealerships with the completed signage as of yet. But I was able to grab a, a picture of the service sign, it's just not attached to a pylon pole, it's attached to a building, but that's what the sign would look like. Um, and for illumination purposes, uh, the uh, the V W is illuminated white and service. It looks black during the day, but it will be white at night. Do, uh, Suzanne, should I go through the rest of the package or?
Um, you could ask Mickey, she's the chair.
Oh, sorry, Nikki, should, should I go through the rest of the package here or um, is that a good visual?
I think it's a pretty good, uh, board members, do you have any questions at this point in time?
Yeah, I have one question. Are the letters broke, um, meaning relief sticking out or they are flush with the, with the?
That's a good question. I can tell you know your signs. The, on, on this one down here, the service sign is a good example. Uh, basically, that's um, die-cut out of flatstock and behind that is acrylic. And the acrylic is essentially black during the day and when it illuminates, it, it has a uh, a translucent vinyl which illuminates bright white. As far as the V W, that's an applique unit. Um, basically the same principle applies. Uh, where in this case, the entire, we'll call it a button logo, which is what they call it. Um, the entire logo is an acrylic face and then they use a metal applique cutout to uh, opaque or block the light from coming through the areas that they don't want. So it creates the shape of a V and a W. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Board members, any other questions? Kathy, Alan?
Uh, just kind of a dumb question. Um, I'm assuming the orientation of the sign to the street is perpendicular to the street?
Yes, um, with
Okay.
Just a moment and I will, I'm not an expert on Zoom, so please forgive me here. I'm gonna jump back to the drawings. And you can take a look at those together. Okay, so. So uh, here's a top-down and a side view of the po- the pylon signs and again. In, in hindsight, I probably just should have put in the pretty pictures and left out the footings just for this meeting. I apologize for that. Uh, we'll go down to button dealership. And um, the service sign is mounted on a pole and that pole is perpendicular to the street, perpendicular to Washington Street. And, and here's a rough example of what that would look like once it's illuminated, um, where the areas of white come through.
I was, I was thinking more about the number two sign, which is more of that tombstone.
Yeah, uh, on Depot Road.
On Depot?
Yep, I'm gonna go back up to the site map.
And like, is there ever any concern about that, um, potentially blocking views of people trying to pull out of? Um, because there's an abutment to that property? And I just, just wondering if there's ever any being, been issues with any other V W clients where that possibly could block the view of traffic they're trying to turn onto Depot Street?
I don't have an answer for that, I'm sorry.
Kathy, that's a good question because I, I would think that if it were on the other side.
It would be easier.
On the incoming entrance, that would be a better location because it's not going to interfere with people pulling in and it shouldn't be blocking the view of the folks pulling out.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there are people leaving the, the parking lot as well as potentially, I mean, I think the driveway for the abutment is probably far enough away that it wouldn't cause such an issue, but I could see people trying to pull out. If you're trying to make a left out of there.
So, so this uh, it's, it's a good question. This, this is uh, parallel to the road.
That, oh, that one's, that one is parallel.
Uh, if we go over to uh, here, these are perpendicular on Washington.
Okay.
Okay, that makes more sense.
That, yes.
Yep, uh, so and it, and it does fall, I think it's just over fifteen feet from the curb for setback.
Okay, so there should be
The stop line is right here where they'd be pulling.
Be able to see around it. Okay, I was looking at the blue line, wondering if that was actually the, the placement of it. But that's actually showing the setback.
Yeah, good, good question. Uh, I didn't draw these, uh, they, someone, someone with more artistic ability than I did.
The blue, the blue line is a measurement.
Yes, looks like about a car length back.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Um, board members, um, ready to take a vote? All right. Uh, need a motion, please, to approve the illuminated signs?
Motion to approve the illuminated signs at six sixty-one Washington Street.
Kedham, second.
All right, well, uh, Weeks?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
Kedham?
Aye.
And Wolf is and I as well. All right, the signs are approved. Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you so much. Uh, I appreciate you having me tonight and thank you. Cheers.
All right, uh, so we're moving on to the next item on the agenda. Um, for eighty-two Foundry Street and three ninety Bay Road, um, there has been a request um, by the applicant to continue um, this to the sixteenth of September. Um, I need a motion to that effect, please.
Motion to continue for eighty-two Foundry Street until, what is the date you said?
Uh, September sixteenth.
September sixteen, Kevin.
Uh, second.
All right, well, it's uh, by roll call, Kid?
Aye.
Weeks?
Aye.
Kedham?
Aye.
And Wolf is and I as well. Um, this has continued. Uh, so uh, now we're on to a site plan review. We've got uh, seven Lois Lane. Um, is the, the, um, hello, uh, could you please uh, introduce yourself, uh, name and address, please?
Uh, Gregory Bonavite's Borderland Engineering. I'm here on behalf of the owner for seven Lois Lane.
All right, welcome. Thank you. Uh, do you have a, a presentation for us tonight?
Sure.
Excellent.
Um, could do a share screen here. All right, I think this is the right drawing. So we have um, seven Lois Lane, it's a um, industrial um, or business zone um, cul-de-sac that was constructed in two thousand and one uh, off of um, Washington Street, one through one thirty-eight. Um, so there's two properties off of it and um, the property that is, that we're talking about this evening is um, uh, was um, permitted as a warehouse use in two thousand and one. And shortly after that was um, destroyed by fire and basically sat um, vacant for the last uh, over ten years. Um, since then, um, so the site was designed at that time and um, has drainage, uh, parking. Um, a stormwater drainage um, to the rear. Um, the business zone is approximately six hundred feet off the center line of Route one thirty-eight. There's a residential zone um, to the rear of the property. Again, this is all existing conditions. Um, the site was, you know, it's um, been sitting um, vacant for a number of years. Um, there's a snow storage area, a dumpster, existing dumpster area, um, subsurface drainage area. Uh, an existing septic system. Um, trench drains, drainage, loading dock area. Um, paved entrance. Then Lois Lane um, heads out to Route one thirty-eight. This is where the existing sign is located. And moving on to the um, proposed site layout sheet. We are proposing to um, basically just re-stripe the parking lot to provide parking for the new use. The use would be um, pickleball um, and um, a ten-seat restaurant. So the um, you know, we're basically working with what we have, the existing, we're staying within the existing constraints of um, the pavement of the existing parking lot. Um, so we're trying to provide um, the required number of parking spots for the use, which is um, tabulated in this area, sixty-two required um, spaces. And then we're providing um, sixty-five spaces. We're showing um, driveway coming in, going around one way. Parking spaces in the rear. Driving around the building. A four-foot aisle along the rear. This is actually um, an edit that we are gonna be making, is showing where the entrance is to the building. It's actually on the back of the building. Um, because this is the high side of the topography, so it's basically flush in the back of the building. So we can have um, ADA parking and um, a flush aisle to, to an entrance way back here. And then excess parking along the sides and the front, which is actually the rear of the building. Um, we're also showing a um, traffic pattern plan for a fire apparatus to prove that a fire truck can make it around the building. The truck dimensions are um, forty feet long. So that's shown on the sheet that the truck can navigate around the building. Um, looking at the staff report, I guess, that may be all with the, I can show you. The um, The, um, the lighting plan, um, shows lighting, wall-mounted lighting on the building. And, um, the luminescence is, um, zero in this area here. And we felt that that may work best with the residential zone to the rear of the, um, the property. And it's not being a, um, a large parking lot that there isn't an excessive amount of traffic flowing around this area. And it would mainly be going by the, the part that is illuminated. Probably missed a couple of things, but, uh, on the staff report, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
All right, uh, thank you very much for that presentation. Um, uh, Stephanie, uh, any comments?
You're muted. Mr. Bonavite's, um, talked about the parking area that I mentioned, um, having not, um, not being illuminated, the, the lighting casting. And I, that was also one of my concerns. Um, not, I wasn't so concerned with this area because I thought this had, uh, um, a lot of vegetated buffer. Between the parking area. Um, I did have a conversation with Greg. And he did mention that a lot of that vegetation immediately adjacent to the proposed parking area or the existing paved area is, has been cleared because it was actually part of the stormwater system that just hadn't been maintained for a while. So I think that keeping the lighting, um, from casting is considerate of the neighbors. My question would be, um, does, i- is this area going to be used for parking at night? And if so, is it going to be sufficiently lit for people who are using the parking lot and coming into and out of the building? So that was one of my key questions. And then, um, Greg, if you could just scroll down a little bit, that tight spot, I heard you talking about that. Um, you know, I, I'm just, there, there was really no walkway around the building and, um, I, I was just a little concerned about people who are parking on this westerly side and
Watch.
It, and, am I addressing the west? I- is that the westerly side?
Yes, yes, exactly, yeah.
Um, with vehicles traveling, um, out. I've been in some of the, I've been to some of these facilities, uh, or areas where you have a tight area and you have people that are walking into a building and it is a little bit tight. Generally, people go slow, but, um, it is, it is something I'm just a little concerned with.
So Stephanie, you're talking about the five spaces on the left-hand side of the plan? How do people get out of the car there and get into the building?
Yes, yes. And I, if you show, um, Greg, if you could show the fire apparatus turning radii, um, I think that, I mean, it, it shows two things. I mean, when we're talking about a piece of fire apparatus, which isn't normally going to be traversing through there. However, you can see it's kind of, it's tight. And if one was and someone was getting out of a vehicle, um, it would be a little tight, so. I don't know how they address it with the space that they have available, which is limited.
Is there any entrance on the side of the building facing, um, one thirty-eight?
There's, um, there's a door over there, I believe. Um, this may be a question for the developer. Like, we could always switch over to the, um, to the floor plans. But I believe the main entrance that they're gonna want folks to come in is over here is, um, it's the, basically the entrance of the building. And then there's gonna be obviously fire, you know, most likely fire doors, um, in other locations for, um, emergency use.
Oh, right. But li- like a club, they wanna process, uh, people through a central area to verify their membership and time and pay and all of that. I, I get it. Thank you.
Um, Mickey, I'm gonna jump off now.
Okay, all right. May we see you back soon?
Yes, I hope so.
All right. Um.
Oh, go ahead. I was just gonna say to follow up on what Stephanie had said about the, the parking lot lighting. It could go back to the upper view.
Oh, sure.
I, I mean, it, it, it looks like there's a, an abundance of lot if you keep going, um, a little bit more.
Yeah, so, um,
Looks like there's an abundance of, of space there, um, to light the back of the parking lot without splashing into the neighbors. Um, maybe I'm just not seeing the plan correctly. Uh, looks like there's, what, a stormwater basin there?
Yeah, there is, um, it might be helpful for, um, a site meeting. Um, the one reason being is the contours in this area, it's hard to picture. But it is, um, a little bit higher as you go back. This stormwater basin is designed to collect water that's flowing towards the property.
Mm-hmm.
And control that outflow through this outlet structure. Um, so these houses are higher over here. So any lighting, um, I think you'd be able to see it from being in this higher portion of the parking lot. Um, and it's really not, not a huge parking lot. It's, um, one row of parking, we roll down again.
Right.
Yeah, so if you're parked in this, in this rear section, you're gonna be able to see the lights and it's not gonna be pitch black over there because you're higher up.
Uh, two comments, please. Uh, you can illuminate that side of the parking lot with dark skylight. And it will not be seen by a property that is actually higher. A property was, it was lower, you can see the light. But the, the property is higher, probably not. Especially if it's, eh, dark sky. So you could add a couple of dark skylights on that parking lot for the safety of the people parking there at night. Uh, that is, uh, one comment. The other comment is about, so the people parking, uh, on the right side were the, uh, the cars parked in an angle there.
Okay, yes.
And I will as, assume that they are parked, people parking on the front of the building facing one thirty-eight. And there are, are those parking places on the left side of the building?
Yeah, yep, yeah, there's, there's limited space.
I, I will understand, and this is a question that people actually needs to walk in the road to get to the entrance.
Yeah, there's gonna be, you know, a little bit. There's one way, um, driving here, you know, so that, um, is less traffic with that. And then also it's a sixteen-foot aisle. So it's not like it's just a, a twelve-foot aisle to get through. Um, so again, it's working with what you have, what we have and, um.
Yeah, there's so much you can do. You cannot put a sidewalk on the side of this building.
Yeah, the sidewalk would end up taking up another four or five feet over there. And then that would reduce that, that aisle from sixteen to twelve feet.
So basi- basically the people here need to walk on the road.
Yeah, there's gonna be, you know, a little bit of that, that would need to happen in th- these areas here. Uh, there's an entrance platform in the back already. Um, but again, you can't, um, I believe you can't enter through the back because you'll be walking basically into the courts. And you'd have to basically walk through where the, where the courts are in this area. And then the, the main entrance is over here. I mean.
Okay, you, do you really need the, eh, parking on the right side there, the one in angle?
This angle parking? I mean, this, um, we did reduce this. We had more here and for the fire apparatus, we, we reduced some. So looking at this again, this could be, um, tandem parking along here, uh, to help with potentially an aisle. Uh, you know, a painted, uh, line aisle along this side. Um, I could take a look at that. It's still
Yeah, because if you, if you turn it, uh, you reduce the, uh, the footprint of parking.
Yeah, I could take a look at that.
It will give you more room. And you can even put a sidewalk on the side of this, with the building, very, very small one.
Yeah, I think there's, um, landing platforms for s- uh, stairs to get in. So at least they would be able to provide some, um.
Yeah, and I, I, I will assume that you don't need to actually do a sidewalk. You can do it painted on the, uh,
Exactly. It would just be a striped, uh, area like a fire lane, you know, pedestrian walkway.
The other thing that i- is crying to be put here is signage for speed.
See, okay.
Uh, I am not, eh, in favor of bumps, but maybe. Uh, some people can, can accelerate here and people walking not see them, uh, so they, I, I have a concern for safety.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I would definitely echo that, Amos. I would also suggest maybe kind of in the back of the building, which is the front towards one thirty-eight, maybe making that employee parking? Because employees would be there longer and there would be less need to traffic back and forth. Um, so you would have your, eh, um, it, it would be less, hopefully, in theory, less traffic, still with the possible, the speeding signs and possible speed bumps to make sure the employees stay safe. But at least maybe there's less traffic, um, going from the building at any ti- any given time.
Mm-hmm.
And I would also echo kind of what Amos said about the, um, the parking lot up towards the top being dark at night. Um, if it's in the winter time and it's dark, as someone who frequently walks through a parking lot like that, it's really hard to see the black ice, um, if you don't have any kind of a light source there. Um, which just kind of makes it a bit more dangerous towards that back area, um, that particularly, um, a, along near where the snow storage would be.
Yeah, it's, it's a relatively s- small parking lot, you gotta remember too, though. It's, you know, two lanes. It's one row across here and then just two, um, alternate rows over here. It's not, you know, um.
You don't need to, you don't need to put a lot of light. Just, I wa- I would assume too, for dark, eh, sky, down-facing lights, to provide safety for the people there.
Yeah, I don't think it's, even though the, the photometric plan from, if they're from the lighting manufacturer, um, I think they're gonna try to say you need more lights with those. Um, because they're trying to sell the lights to you. So that's.
You'll have employees needing to go out to the dumpster as well, and that's at the back far corner. So you want that lit.
Yeah, exactly.
How many courts are there here? Six?
I believe there are eight courts. Let me just, um, check on that and you can feel free to rattle off some more questions while I'm looking at that.
Oh, no. I- if it's eight, I was just gonna say that's thirty-two people playing and you got sixty-five spots, so potentially, uh, thirty-two waiting to go on while thirty-two are playing. So, I mean, it sounds about right.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think you, you will have definitely, if you're, eh, I think you will have people in winter at the evening here when it's dark.
Mm-hmm.
That's for sure.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, definitely. That's the, the main advantage to having the indoor, um, pickleball. So you can get
Eh, therefore that bad parking lot is crying for light. And, eh, you can, you can have a reduced, eh, lighting feature that still provide what you need in order to see.
Mm-hmm.
Where you're walking, you know, what fell from your pocket when exiting the car, all, all that stuff.
Yep, eight, eight courts.
Thank you.
Okay, um, board members, uh, any, everyone say, welcome back, Stephanie, um.
Uh, yeah, just briefly.
Okay.
But I'm glad I jumped back. I, I think these were all good comments by the board. Thank you.
Uh, so, uh, do we want to, um, uh, have the, um, uh, continue this, um? Do I have a motion, uh, to do so with the applicant can come back and kind of show us the, the lighting plan? Um, and, um, some possible signage in the parking lot to keep it safe?
Or is it, is it possible to have a site meeting, a quick site meeting this week?
Stephanie?
Um, if it, yes. The short answer is yes. We can, I'm sure we can schedule that. Um, Greg, would someone from your side?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I, I think the board, I, I don't think there needs to be someone there from the applicant's side, but, um, it's always helpful.
Yeah, we're very flexible. We can be there anytime.
So Suzanne, can you coordinate with the board and with Mr. Bonavite? To schedule an onsite?
Sure.
All right, um, and do I have a motion to continue?
Eh, I g- I just have a, eh, another question. Uh, eh, you will need some illumination on front and signs, right? Is that would be part of your site review, needs to be or not?
Yeah, we have, um, a photometric plan that has wall-mounted, um, lighting. It's just, the concern was the, um, front, which is actually the rear of the, the property, um, not shining enough into that, um, that second row of parking. I could put up that, that plan for you if you're interested in seeing it.
So is the issue that it's building-mounted lighting? There's no freestanding pylons?
Exactly, yeah. It's a, it's a exist- existing site that would be, um, difficult to route, you know, electrical conduits and, um, to the rear of the property. And not only that, with the, um, residential zone behind there, what we had to, um, clean the, the, um, stormwater basin out, which is in, in this rare area. Um, now there's not as much foliage to try to help with, you know, blocking out any sort of lighting.
So, so you're saying you couldn't put up some pole-mounted lights where the snow storage line is, to shine back?
It would be, it would be very difficult. That's why I would, you know, was, was hoping for a site meeting to show you, um,
Okay.
the, the situation that it, that's there.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at Google Maps.
Hmm.
If you can show a Google map, it shows you the amount of vegetation behind the, this, the, the houses in the back.
Mm-hmm.
Is significant. Uh, I would, eh, eh, almost you can tell what the basement is from the Google map. Because the vegetation has a different color there. And it, it looks lower.
Hmm, in the, in the recent last couple of weeks, we, um, had a machine in there that was like an industrial commercial mower to clean out the, um, stormwater basin. Um, at the request of the Conservation Commission and just doing general maintenance on the stormwater basin. And, um, a lot of the foliage, it has been, been removed because of that.
Yeah, definitely. If you wanna put lights on the back, as I recommend, you will need to cut that, the asphalt and put a conduit all the way to the back. Yeah, it's, it's cost, but, uh, it's also safety in, in, in my observation.
All right, so I think we're gonna schedule a site visit this week, Suzanne?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Go ahead and let us know.
Okay, um, do I have a motion to continue? Okay, um do I have a motion to continue?
Budge you to continue uh site plan review, Kevin.
Okay, good.
All right, uh. All in uh roll call, what, weeks?
Aye.
Aye.
Wolf is an aye as well, all right, thank you very much, um we will see you uh the site plan review this week.
Okay, thank you, have a good night.
Alright, thanks so much. Okay, uh next on the um agenda. Is uh a potential vote to table uh the public hearing for one forty nine uh Lincoln Street Carter Estates. Um so this is uh due to um with the public hearing, it is the board's responsibility within a hundred and thirty-five days. Um or such time, uh further time as from the applicant to kind of render um a decision with the public hearing, um this is a. Is a um hearing that has been postponed a few times, so at the request of the applicant, it is to um. Postpu- to table this, um to uh not a s- a date certain, but a date in the future. Um this will allow if um uh when, if and when this public hearing is reopened. All of the butters will be re notified, things will be put back in the paper and everybody will um get the appropriate notifications again, that this is, this public hearing is. Is going to happen, um do I have any questions for the board on this? If not, do I have a motion to table the public hearing?
Motion to table the public hearing for Carter Estates.
A second.
All right, I'll do this by roll call, Kevin? Amos? Weeks?
Aye.
Yep?
Aye.
And Wolf is an aye as well, uh it, this has been tabled. All right, um next on the agenda um is a presentation on the. Requested uh Eastern zoning bylaw change, uh re-gas stations, um do we have? Mr. Hawk um in the audience, Susan?
They are being promoted.
Okay, perfect.
And Mr. McKenna.
Hey folks, took a moment for my computer to update, so I don't know if you announced us, so uh if that's the case, my apologies.
Welcome, um thank you so much for joining us today, um if you could please state your name.
My name is Brian McKenna and I reside at fifteen Heidi Road in Southeastern Massachusetts.
All right, pleasure, pleasure to have you today, um you're here to give us a present, is Mr. Hawk joining us or?
He he is, he's probably gonna be uh the silent partner in this, but he is available for questions. Should the uh committee have any?
Excellent, if, did, would he mind just introducing himself, name and address, that way we don't have to do that later?
Sure.
Perfect, and then we can get on to the presentation, thank you.
You should unmute.
I don't know if he's a panelist, so we.
Um he he is.
He is, okay, Rick, if you're on, uh which I think you are, could you unmute and announce yourself? Maybe muted.
Yeah. Okay, um well, we can, we can, I don't wanna.
Come back to it.
Yeah, we'll come back to it.
Thanks for the time, we've got six, six slides and really, we wanna have a conversation with the group. About a recommendation for a setback change uh as it relates to fueling stations uh in the town of Easton. So when, when we look at the effects of health based on exposure to gasoline. You'll notice on the first block, there is, there are a host of chemicals. Uh the industry will often refer to the uh a group of four. Uh benzene, ethylbenzene, tulin and xylene, which are commonly known in the industry as the B-tex. Those are by far the most hazardous and dangerous. And they are the ones that contribute to the last two in the second bullet, which is damage to fertility. Damage to organs and prolonged repeated exposure to all of these various organs of the body and childhood leukemias. Uh B-tex are bad things, I I have a four-decade career in healthcare. Um I take these things very seriously, uh they're not, they're not chemicals we as humans should be around. To the extent humanly possible, uh and we have four primary modes of exposure to these things. You know, when you think of gasoline, many of us fuel our cars multiple times a week. Next to driving the car, it's probably the most dangerous activity we will engage in. And you'll drive by gas stations seeing people on cell phones, drinking coffee. When they're really putting a toxin in their vehicle and they should pay a lot more attention. Uh the four ways we come in contact with any of the chemicals in gasoline is. Through the the liquid uh version of it, uh touching it, uh whether that's through a spill. Whether it's through splashing, um usually folks who deal with it day in and day out, like gas station attendants. Not that you see full service that much anymore, or the fuel tank uh operators who are pumping. Their tanker trucks into the underground storage tanks. Uh we can be exposed to it uh through ingestion of contaminated drinking water. You know, when you look at Easton, we're a very wet community, both above ground and underground. And uh apods are at risk of underground contamination. And when you think of all the work that the town of Easton has done to clean and purify our water based on forever chemicals. It'd be tragic uh for underground contamination. Uh really, a big focus of tonight's presentation is the inhalation of ambient gasoline vapors. That's what I like to call the invisible hazard, and we'll talk about that on a couple of slides. And then physical contact with contaminated soil, and just for the the board's uh. Uh knowledge, all of our references are at the bottom of the slides. When we think about underground storage tanks, these, these breathe and for them to breathe. They pump out vapors, um and and that can be due to fuel being put into the tank, fuel coming out of the tank. Or due to barometric or temperature pressures. Um and this is probably more so than spills and the common uh cause. Of contamination by uh by humans uh of of gasoline or the B-tex. Uh in several points, we cite Columbia University's Mailman School of Public Health. Um they have estimated that these vent pipes, and you see these usually behind gas stations, behind the physical building. Uh they can vent between three to seven gallons per day of a thousand gallons that is pumped into. Um users' cars and that translates for a light-duty gas station. Um that pumps about twenty-five hundred gallons to between seven and a half and seventeen point five gallons of fuel. Per day that is vented into the atmosphere. Um and annually, that's about two point seven to six point four thousand gallons of fuel. Going into the atmosphere that we're risk be breathing in and causing all that organ damage that we talked about on the first slide. We also wor- whoop, sorry about that. Uh we also worry about small spills. Um we see these whenever we pull into a gas station. Will have small incremental spills in those cement pads that are around the gas pumps. And while the ga- while the cement usually does a fairly good job of retaining that spill. Over time, it's pitted by the gasoline or when you have uh rain. Um it will bring that up out of the grooves and spill it into adjacent areas. It's estimated that four hundred gallons is spilled per fuel station per decade. So if you translate that down to a a year, it's about forty gallons a year. And if you look at the average contamination risk, a gallon of gasoline can contaminate somewhere between seven hundred and fifty. Thousand gallons to up to a million gallons of underground drinking water once that hits topsoil. Um and once it does get into the ground, it leaches out, if you will. About a hundred and ninety-eight feet at a best-case scenario to up to five hundred and fifty-four feet. On a worst-case scenario, so if you round that down to five hundred feet from where that gas entered the soil. There's the risk of contaminating the ground and contaminating groundwater. When we we go back to California, can be sometimes perceived as an incredibly liberal state. But from an environmental standpoint, they seem to have great regulations, we're often seeing everything from. Uh Christmas lights uh to emission standards. Uh the the industry usually is working around California standards. Um and back in two thousand and eight, they looked at nineteen ninety estimates of exposure. And they felt that three hundred feet was an appropriate measure of having residents. And residential zone, whether that be um an individual residence, an apartment building, a school. A daycare center, a nursing home, um that they should be set back three hundred feet from a fuel station. Uh again, Columbia University Mailman School of Public Health updated California's estimates in a two thousand and eighteen study. And believe based on their findings, that vent emissions can be ten times greater. Than California first estimated in two thousand and eight, which correlates more with that underground pum. Of five hundred and fifty-four feet that it really should be, that setback shouldn't be three hundred. Really should be five hundred feet from the boundary line of any fuel station to the nearest residence. Daycare center, public school, uh residential property. Our recommendation would be that the town adopts the five hundred feet. From the nearest, the boundary line of that fueling station to the nearest residence. Or any of those other entities that we deemed included in a residence. Now, that would be for new fueling stations. We're not asking that this be retroactively applied to the eight current fueling stations in Easton. But we feel that based on science, anything less than five hundred feet is putting people at risk of a laundry list. Of known carcinogens and health hazards. We also realize there could be down the road some mitigating standard or mitigating scenario. In which the town may need to allow for a variance and and we're open to that. But at a best-case scenario, fueling stations shouldn't be allowed any closer than five hundred feet from the nearest residence. I think Rick and I are open to taking questions from any of the the board members.
All right, uh thank you very much for that presentation, Mr. McKenna. Um Mr. Hawk, if you just wanna introduce yourself, name and address really quick for the record, and then we can get to the, see if the board members have any questions?
Yes, can you hear me? Okay, my name is Rick Hawk and I live at one hundred Highland Street in Southeastern.
Excellent, thank you, uh so board members, uh any questions uh for Mr. McKenna or Mr. Hawk? Amos, I think you're muted.
Yes, I am muted, so the five hundred uh feet that you mentioned are related to infiltration into the ground. What is the distance of the vapors uh that are coming out of vents? Or even spillages say vent as well, but what what is that distance?
That's, that's about five hundred feet for uh a harmful level, levels of those vapors. Five, five hundred feet, so that's what, that's what Mr. McKenna said, that that the underground travel distance of the of the contamination. Is roughly equal to the same dimensions as the airborne infiltration.
And 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 both, and both are silent in the sense that we operate in and around vapors every time we go fuel our vehicles. And in, for a point of reference, um when you look at a a can of gasoline. And you open the container, what you see are vapors escaping that. They're the wavy lines and it's actually gasoline in of itself is not flammable. The vapors are the flammable part of gasoline. And those travel invisibly from breather pipes or their underground storage tanks. Which usually are somewhere in the sixteen to twenty thousand gallon range.
The other, the other thing that I'd comment, uh if I may. Is, is that um the need for gasoline is going to decline precipitously over the next decade or two. So this is a little bit of a tempest in a teapot because. Uh we don't anticipate that there's not, that there's gonna be many more permits requested for gas stations. But it's important that we set out the requirements ahead of time to prevent people from expending a lot of time, energy. Money upfront in something that's ultimately gonna prove fruitless. Um so, and the um ZBA has twice in December of two thousand nineteen. And in June of this year denied special permits for gasoline. But I would like to commend um Stephanie for going after the town council and getting a um. A ruling on uh the apods uh that allows uh us to interpret even a partial apod. Or partial uh occupation of an apod on a property as extending to the boundaries of the property. So that's good work and it's good work, our water department does great work, Stephanie's done great work. Uh but it's not done yet.
I, I have a quick question, um I was somewhat involved with these facts a few months back, as as most of you know. Um I thought there were other townships, counties, I I don't think it were states that. Had passed regulations similar to California, uh uh am I not recalling the facts correctly? I, I know there are a number of discreet um towns that voted down gas stations for these reasons, but. Weren't there some that adopted similar setbacks, other towns or cities?
Yes, but it's been spotty and not universal.
California is the only one that did it statewide?
And the other, the other thing is, some of, some of those jurisdictions, when they did it, they did it on the old three hundred foot setback requirement. Which is based on nineteen nineties estimates, so that two hundred, two thousand eighteen study is a very important one. Because uh it updates uh the info- the information that we have regarding. What the concentrations are and what distances, and if anyone cares to do that reference that's on that page. Uh it's a very extensive report, so um I would encourage you to read that article.
You say it's harmful, what are the consequences of a long-time exposure, is that? Cancerogenic, is that, what 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 the study says is actual consequence of this exposure?
Okay, um. Three through five, three through five on this list. Various cancers, including childhood leukemias, damage to fertility in unborn children and damage to the following organs. And and again, I I I can't stress enough, when you look at vapors, they're the silent killer. They're the silent attacker on our health and homeostasis because we don't see it. We worry about groundwater penetration from underground tanks and there are devices in place in newer. Uh fueling stations that allow for appropriate monitoring, uh and while the. Uh, and while the industry has worked hard to try to capture the vapors, whether it's in the fueling truck filling the underground tanks, whether it's in the tanks breathing, or whether it's in us fueling our own vehicles, there is still seepage that gets out. And it's just not good. The, the other thing, the, the other thing that I'd mention too, uh, Brian, is that uh, the properties that we're talking about, residences, daycares, nursing homes and schools. Those are people, those are places where populations are present anywhere from twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. Okay, down to a school which is probably in operation for about nine or ten hours a day. Uh, and that's constant exposure that they get to these vapors. And that's what's so, uh, so terrible about it. So, um, and you, and if it's in your house, and it's, this is, this also invades indoor air quality. Um, if it's in your house, there's no place to go to escape it. So, that's what makes it dangerous.
Interesting, interesting that there is no technology to capture those vapors on the gas station and trap them uh somehow, but it's, it's practically impossible.
They've improved, it's not a hundred percent. Uh, Mr. Weeks, you and I had conversations about this before. Um, would you care to uh let the board know about the two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar wet scrubbers?
Oh yeah, I was just gonna say that, that exactly. You read my mind, Rick, is uh Amos, there, there are scrubbers uh extremely expensive that gas stations can be required to put on these vents. Uh, they, they are typically outside the scope of most, you know, gas station projects. But there, as you had asked, there is technology that can eliminate the problem.
I will, I will assume there is. It's costly, but also uh.
Right.
It's cost enough to, to, to all of us.
Well, o- once again, we're focused on light duty, uh, which is the one that's mentioned in our town code. So, light duty is typically um four to six pumps. Uh, and the other thing that you have to understand about gas stations is that they're very low profit margins. Um, the profit margin on gas is about a one point five percent to three percent. Which is lower than food, it's lower than alcohol, it's lower than lottery tickets, it's lower than everything. Um, and, you know, I just think that gas stations would be reluctant to put a two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar scrubber if they're only pumping a limited amount of gas.
Yeah. Becoming practical. What, uh, I, I will assume that the gas stations is an invitation to go to the store. That's where they make the money.
That, that's right. They're, they're basically using them, uh, using the gas as a lure to come into the store. That's correct.
Alright, well, uh, Mr. McKenna, Mr. Hawk, I wanna thank you for um the presentation tonight. Um, the board will take this under consideration. Um, thank you very much.
We appreciate it. Thanks very much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, um, without seeing Stephanie.
There she is.
Oh, hey, what timing. Um, so uh chair updates. Uh, so actually, let's do the minutes while Stephanie gets kind of back online. Um, do we have a motion um to, uh, um, actually for the minutes? Does anybody have any, any board members have any comments?
No comments. Motion to approve minutes.
Alright. Thank you. Uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Alright, let's do roll call vote, Ken.
Aye.
Weeks?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
And Wolf is an aye as well. Minutes um for August twelfth, twenty twenty-four uh board approved. Uh, now Stephanie, uh, back to you uh for, there is no chair update because I am not the chair. Um, I'm just filling in for tonight. Uh, so we're gonna pass it along to Stephanie uh for the planning director update on the master plan. I see her, but I don't know that she's here.
Hey.
Hey, there you are.
Here we go. Let's see. Start my video. So I've mentioned a couple of times over the past several months that we're getting ready to do an update to the master plan. Envision Easton was, uh, which is Easton's current master pa- plan was adopted in two thousand fourteen. It's been ten years. Um, and that document has really served the town well. The board will note that I uh reference how projects fit in with the master plan. Um, when I do my review, but it's also helped guide the policy and um financial investments, capital investments that the town makes in the town and um it is time for an update. There are certainly emerging issues. The housing crisis that we're facing in both the town and, and across the state has really come to the forefront. Um, you know, climate change is another area where um a lot of people are really focusing on both trying to reduce carbon emissions, but also build resiliency. So it really um seems timely. So um, the select board tonight has a recommendation before them to form a master plan update committee that's comprised of representatives from various relevant boards. The planning board, of course, being a, a leader in, in that role. Um, but also the Affordable Housing Trust, the Conservation Commission and other boards. And I expect that they will vote favorably on the charge and will vote to appoint that committee. And um then we'll, we, we will begin the process, which will include publishing a request for proposals from qualified consultants to help the town with the development of the master plan update.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, so we don't need to do anything tonight? We don't need to?
No.
Okay. Cool. Um, that sounds pretty exciting though. Um, so do we have any other thing to discuss or can we entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Kevin.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Alright, uh, kid?
Aye.
Amos?
Aye.
And Weeks?
Aye.
And Wolf is an aye as well. We are adjourned. Thank you all for uh putting up with me tonight. As I stepped in for Bob, he'll be back next time.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night and good luck.